I hope you've all got your little booklets.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe Sophie would open for us in prayer.
Holy Spirit, calm them still our hearts now as we gather before you around your word. We give you thanks for your word. We give you thanks, Lord, that we can come to it at any time of the day or night, that it is readily readily available to us. And I just pray now that you would give us hearts hungry to receive your word, that we might be fed and Lord, that that we just might receive all that you want to give us through your word. So I ask you now to bless John as he helps us delve into your word and as he opens it to us. And so just be with us for this short time together in Jesus' name. Amen.
Last week, for for those that weren't weren't with us, this study is really in two strands. One, we have the little booklet and the other thing is the printed handout. They're written by the same lady, Anne Woodcock. The booklet deals with the causes of discontent and the biblical, if you like, answer to discontent or contentment, where we find contentment. Whereas the the handout gives some practical guides. And I'm sure, George, you followed the instructions and learnt. Did you get yours? You did?
No, no, I rang David and he promised to post me, you know, a handout. I didn't get it.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Well, that doesn't matter. I'm sure you can quote me Proverbs nineteen verse twenty three. No. Well, of course, that was one of the things that they asked us to try and try and memorize that verse. And of course, as I've written it down, because my memory is so bad, "The fear of the Lord leads to life and the one who rests and then one rests content untouched by trouble." So that's one of the the things we looked at last week. We didn't have the booklet, so we concentrated on the handout.
George, sorry, just to interrupt and say, I'm just sending it. I'm emailing it across to you right now. And but but we'll make sure today to post. I'll I'll actually I'll drop a copy of it through your letterbox later on today.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So if you like, the the practical solution for last week was spirit of the Lord, which is reverence for God. That being an awe of God, wanting to please God, and we please God by keeping his commandments. And some of the suggestions were making lists of why we should fear the Lord after we looked at Psalm thirty three. And some of the things that shows how we should how we should fear the Lord, looking at first Peter. One of the other suggestions was that we should have a prayer body that would pray for us over the phone in these difficult times if we feel ourselves spiraling into discontent. And to cultivate a habit of giving thanks to God as soon as we open our eyes. Thank God that we we can walk, talk, see, hear. And at the end of the day, also repeat that thanksgiving. And that cultivates that fear of the Lord, that reverence, that understanding that he is in charge no matter what is seeming to go on in the world round about us. Okay, so we'll start our week booklet this morning. And it's a brief look through Ecclesiastes. At one of the reasons why we have discontent, why we're all searching for content in this world. And the first question is on page seven. If you open up your booklet, page seven. Our hungry hearts. And as I said last week, some of these questions, they flow naturally from observation, what you're actually seeing in the passage we read today. There's interpretation. Do we understand what it's saying to us? And then application, applying it so as we trust God and we can put not discontent behind us, but try and understand it and know that God will help us work through it. So there's always a sort of icebreaker question. You can see it there. Question one, can you remember a time when you felt blissfully contented, even for just a few moments? And what put an end to it? Does anybody want to offer up some thoughts?
And one that I suppose it's always good to just to respond whenever something immediately comes to mind. Rather than sit and ponder the many things. And but but for me, I suppose the the most favourite place that I've ever been in the world has to be Lake Como in Italy. And at one stage, I did actually say to Alison, do you know something? I'm gonna move here. I'm I'm gonna move to this place. And we had an apartment we would have gone to a couple, couple, a couple of years in a row. But it was an apartment that, if you can imagine, sitting on the edge of the the hill, looking on to the lake. And you'd have had the sunset going over across the other side of the lake and over the over the mountains. And there was there was one day in particular where I was sitting beside the pool. And I didn't have a book in front of me, nothing. I was just sitting just in awe of God's creation, because it is the most beautiful scenery ever. And there wasn't anyone else around, and it was as quiet as anything. And I I just felt that that sense of everything was right with the world. Do that that sense of not a worry, not a, you know, the colic, that colic that talks about the occupations of our daily life. And and you know, our heads being full of lots of it, there's just nothing. And it was just that sense of bliss, calm and content with everything. And and I can remember it well, because out of absolutely nowhere, I could hear these two children running towards me and and doing a bomb into the swimming pool. And it was and 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 it just brought it to to an end in a in a nice way. But but that that sense of interruption, I suppose, was the was the thing that that removed that that sense of contentment.
Anybody else? Any thoughts or offerings?
I suppose I remember when our our two daughters were growing up and they were quite young. And we're sitting quite peacefully and tranquilly after Christmas dinner in front of a warm fire and having had a glass or two of wine. And it was absolute bliss and tranquility. And then that was soon interrupted because they started to to argue and squabble and fight. And I suppose that was bringing me back to reality. You know, it was just a fleeting moment. But like Johnny, you know, I suppose the the demands of the world crowd in upon us. And then any bliss or distraction from from our present circumstances is sort of removed.
And from my own point of view, it's a lot more basic, I think. I remember spending weeks writing the thesis and got it finally bound and all the rest of it. And I had a Viva, that's that's your external examination, which was about eight hours long. Got through that, went off to the pub and thought, oh, great, this is this is it. And the realisation came, I don't have a job. What am I gonna do now? Okay, so we go on to Ecclesiastes, chapter one, verses one to fourteen. And Winnie, would you read it? Because you have the the new living translation, please.
One to fourteen.
One to fourteen, please.
These are the words of the teacher, King David's son who ruled in Jerusalem. Everything is meaningless, says the teacher, utterly meaningless. What do people get for all their hard work? Generations come and go, but nothing really changes. The sun rises and sets and hurries around to rise again. The wind blows south and north, here and there, twisting back and forth, getting nowhere. The rivers run into the sea, but the sea is never full. Then the water returns again to the rivers and flows again to the sea. Everything is so weary and tiresome. No matter how much we say, we are never satisfied. No matter how much we hear, we are not content. History merely repeats itself. It has all been done before. Nothing under the sun is truly new. What can you point to that is new? How do you know it didn't really exist long ago? We don't remember what happened in those former times. And in future generations, no one will remember what we are doing now. I, the teacher, was king of Israel and I lived in Jerusalem. I devoted myself to search for understanding and to explore by wisdom, everything being done in the world. I soon discovered that God has dealt tragic a tragic existence to the human race. Everything under the sun is meaningless like chasing wind.
Okay. The little note before that reading says Ecclesiastes was written by a king of Israel who called himself the teacher. He seems to have been powerful and prosperous and to have ruled during a period of peace and stability. He wrote this book to study and to explore by wisdom all that is done under heaven. In the NIV, it opens with the words of the teacher, son of David, king of Jerusalem. Many think that was Solomon, but I understand I don't have any knowledge of Hebrew. But the word there can mean a descendant, quite distant. But most people think the son of David was actually Solomon. Okay, so question two, how does the teacher feel about life? You know, any single word?
Predictable.
Just.
Predictable, predictable.
Predictable, yeah.
Intimidated.
Discontented, fed up. And Johnny said.
Meaningless.
Meaningless. Yeah, it's meaningless, wearisome, a chasing after the sun or the wind, a pointless exercise. Seems very pessimistic, almost despairing. The second part of the question, do you find this surprising? I mean, he's king of England or king of England, king of Israel. He appears to be wealthy. He seems to be, you know, reasonably prosperous. What what do you think? Does that surprise you?
Yes, back to the, oh, sorry, when he had everything in the king.
Yes.
I remember a story, I think maybe Johnny told it, about the rich man. And no matter what he did and achieved, he had he went after, first of all, holidays throughout the world. And then he went after, he thought he could get nothing out of that. He burned a mansion. No, that didn't satisfy him. Then he decided he'd sail around the world. But the one that clinched it for me was the man that climbed Mount Everest. He spent his whole life planning and working for that. And when he got to the top of Mount Everest, he said, well, I'm here now. What do I do now? There was nothing left, you know, and then, of course, he turned to God and that was that was the answer. That was the gap. That was the hole in his life, you know.
Okay, you're spoiling the story, George, but I'll stop you there. You've nearly upped the question seven.
John, I I would probably beg to differ on this one slightly in that.
Okay.
I I actually don't find it surprising. The reason I don't find it surprising is that there are just so many examples throughout life of people, you know, Robbie Williams, for example, you know, and take that, who then had a huge solo career and whatever. And and yet, that sense of searching or Eddie Mercury, I think, you know, he would have commented about it. Elton John, all these people that have everything that they could ever need and yet have nothing. And it's a common story.
Yeah, very much so. You know, the Beatles sang Can't Buy Me Love. I can't remember which rich man it was, whether it was Rockefeller or one of the other guys. And somebody asked.
Paul Getty.
Paul Getty it was, yes.
Yeah, I was watching that last week too.
Yeah, how much money would it take to make you happy? And he says, more than a half a million. So discontent.
But you know what I thought when I read that, why I was surprised? Because I think it's reassuring that things are predictable. You know, the the moon's coming up at night and the sun's coming up in the morning. All that predictability, I think, gives you a reassurance and that's satisfying. You know, that the daffodils are on their way up now. All that beauty is there. So I I find it strange that that would discontent somebody, you know.
I think here in Northern Ireland would probably say, wind your neck in, you know, what are you moaning about your king? Get off your back and get a real job. But that that's not quite, you know, we'll we'll look at it in a wee bit more depth. But this type of literature within wisdom literature of the ancient Near East was a style of writing called pessimism literature. In the Bible, Ecclesiastes Ecclesiastes is the only example. And the tradition goes back at least 2,000 years B.C. in both Egypt and Mesopotamia. Yet Ecclesiastes is pessimism pessimism with a difference. For other pessimism writings were bleak, sensual and unrelieved by any particle of hope. In the dialogue of pessimism, I'll get this right in a minute, pessimism written in Babylonia about 1400 B.C., they actually say suicide is the only answer to the problem of this life. So that's bleak. In the epic of Gilgamesh, the god Shamash states bluntly, "The life you pursue, you shall not find." And although Ecclesiastes echoes that ancient pessimism, it has another strand, which of course George has alluded to, which is you need God in your life to overcome this sort of natural pessimism. Okay.
John, if I was the devil's advocate, I'd say to you now, when ignorance is bliss is folly to be wise, what would you say to that?
We'll answer it in question two. There, you know, there, I think person, human personalities differ. Some have a very positive outlook in life, some very negative. Some people say, you know, my pint glass is half full. Others would say it's half empty. And Sophie would tell you, I would say it's also cracked and running out. You know, some of us are are more negative than others. I remember we had a little research group and everything the boss would postulate that we do. This guy would say, oh, it's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. And the boss would say, you're a terrible pessimist. And he answered him back and says, a pessimist, that's what an optimist calls a realist.
Okay, if we if we turn over the page to question three, you can see a little table there. And if I read you out the various verses, if you want to write in what you think the teacher was talking about. If we look at the following verses from Ecclesiastes in the teacher's search for meaning and contentment, what did he try and what did he discover? So I'll read the verses. Can you all see that table?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what did he try out? And verses one sixteen to eighteen, he says, "I thought to myself, look, I have grown and increased in wisdom more than anyone who has ruled over Jerusalem before me. I've experienced much, much of wisdom and knowledge. Then I applied myself to the understanding of wisdom and also madness and folly. But I learnt that this too is a chasing after the wind. For with much wisdom comes much sorrow, the more knowledge, the more gift." So what did he try out?
He tried to bewaze.
Yes, intellectualism, pursuit of knowledge, pursuit of wisdom.
Understanding and the understanding.
Yeah, and to understand why he's here. And what did he discover? If you look at the other side of the table, one verse eighteen. Much wisdom causes comes with much wisdom.
I think that you begin to realise that as you grow in wisdom and age to an experience, the more you you know, you realise how little you actually do know.
Yes, but does it help you get through life?
Well, not not really.
Yes, I think it does. It helps you to have an understanding of how other people think about things as well. Helps you to rational better.
Okay, the second part is two verse sixteen. What does he say? "For the wise man, like the fool, will not be long remembered. In days to come, both will be forgotten. Like the fool, the wise man too must die." So he discovered death has a finality about it. So it doesn't matter how wise you are in his understanding or how stupid you are or how foolish you are. Death has a finality about it. Okay, so the next group down, two verses one to three, does somebody want to read those?
All right, okay. "I said to myself, come now, I will test you with pleasure to find out what is good. But then, but that also proved to be meaningless. Laughter, I said, is madness. And what does pleasure accomplish? I tried cheering myself with wine and embracing folly. My mind still guided me with wisdom. I wanted to see what was good for people and to do under the heavens."
Okay, would someone read then verses four to six?
I can read it, but I have a different version completely.
Okay, go ahead.
Verse four, "I did some great things. I built houses and I planted vineyards. I had flower gardens and orchards full of fruit trees. I had pools where I could get water for the trees."
Okay, and seven to eight, someone read that?
"I bought male and female slaves and had other slaves who were born in my house. I also owned more herds and flocks than anyone in Jerusalem before me. I amassed silver and gold for myself and the treasure of kingdoms and provinces. I acquired male and female singers and a harium as well, the delights of a man's heart."
"I became greater by far than anyone in Jerusalem before me. In all this way, my wisdom stayed with me." And lastly, chapter two seventeen to twenty three, can someone read those?
I'll do that one if you want. "So I hated life because the work that is done under the sun was grievous to me. All of it is meaningless, chasing after the wind. I hated all the things I had toiled for under the sun because I must leave them to the one who comes after me. And who knows whether he will be a wiser man or a fool? Yet he will have control over all the work into which I have poured my effort and skill under the sun. This too is meaningless. So my heart began to despair over all my toilsome labour under the sun. For a man may do his work with wisdom, knowledge and skill, and then he must leave all he owns to someone who has not worked for it. This too is meaningless and a great misfortune. What does a man get for all the toil and anxious striving with which he labours under the sun? All his days, his work is pain and grief. Even at night, his mind does not rest. This too is meaningless."
Postman's just about to knock the door there. So in verses two, one to three, he's trying out pleasure, laughter, superficial fun. In two verses four to six, he's looking at projects, endeavors, you know, making brilliant gardens and all the rest of it. And chapter two, verses seventy eight, he's acquiring stuff, possessions. In two verse nine, it's about prestige, building up his influence. And in chapter two, verses seventeen to twenty three, it's just sheer hard work, toil. And what does he discover in two verse eleven? Bitter disappointment, discontent, nothing was gained, no satisfaction, no contentment. And then two verse eighteen to nineteen is Johnny read, "What you achieve is left to someone else who's not worked for it and may well ruin your legacy." And the verse twenty three, "All you're guaranteed is pain and grief and stress." Now, that's a that's a pretty bleak outlook, but this is looking at the the world and life under the sun, essentially without God. So if we look at question four, it says, "Look at the list of things that the teacher turned to in order to find meaning and fulfillment." That was pleasure, projects, possessions, prestige, toilet and work. Where do you see the same search in the lives of people around us today and the same disappointment? Does anybody want to have a thought on that? Yes, Winnie?
Somebody said, no, he said nothing changes, but today it's it's happening. And I think it's maybe happening more so because the younger generation is they're already doing this. They're trying to achieve a better house than their friends have or their neighbours have. It's all to do with how much money they can earn and go on holidays, all the usual things to try and make them happy.
Okay. Sorry, are these necessarily a bad thing, Winnie?
No, not, no, not if it's. Well.
No, to want to.
Yes and no, if it's done for the right reasons, but not really the to me, in the middle of it all, it's, no matter what they're doing, it's greed in a sense. You know, people have got greedier, more selfish. And they're striving for something, always looking for something in their lives. And well, to us as Christians, they'll never find it unless they cry out to Jesus.
Okay.
For help.
Johnny?
Yes, and not not that I want this to end up being such a depressive Bible study. And but increasingly over this past year, I have been in with a lot more families than than I wish to ever have been in where obviously loved ones have died. And when I'm putting together a eulogy, a number of times, it's very much, you know, okay, did this and he did that and he was involved in this and he was involved in that. And and you know, I I think it's important for them to talk about. But unfortunately, there there's no no real mention of God. And and I have to try and find little things that to attach to that person and, you know, that they were confirmed or whatever. You know, and they went to the B B in the church or or something like that. And so you're you're left with a family where where basically, you know, it is all of this, you know, they were able to provide a house for their children and, you know, they did well in the job and all that. But it 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 in in a spiritual sense, it's completely meaningless.
Yeah, George?
I remember my father once telling me a story, and it's a very short one. Our neighbour just down the road, who was a very, very wealthy man, he owned a pub, he owned a a bond store, he owned a beautiful house, he had a massive big car and he had everything that the world could, you could imagine should should give him. And then he died and some of the people around were saying, oh, you wouldn't believe it, Bill, my father's name was Bill. He left £100,000. What do you think of that? And my father said, no, no, he didn't leave it. He was taken away from it.
He was taken away from it. Yeah. Ruth, were you gonna say something there?
Yes. There were two things I was thinking about when I was reading it and it's more on the wider scheme in the whole world. The world seems to be in a dire situation. But I was thinking about the the grade for land and for oil and for all those amenities. The governments and the, you know, the corruption, that's the sort of thing that annoys me about the world at the minute, the corruption that's there. And the lack of, do you know, when you look at the probably a lot of the Middle Eastern countries and things, how they dishonor women, how they dishonor God? How they totally away from Christianity? That sort of thing frightens me in the big scheme of things. And then in the sort of back to greed and I was watching that, we were talking about John Paul Getty, I watched that film the other night and, you know, as you had said, the stuff that man had and it still was never enough. He'd all the treasures, paintings, gold. And the renaissance that filtered down through his whole family. After I watched the film and went on and read all about his family and his, you know, descendants. And every single one of those family members were destroyed. You know, if it wasn't drugs and alcohol and all sorts of dreadful situations, things happened to their children. I think, I mean, that must have been. You know, you could just see what was missing from a Christian point of view, you could see what was missing in that life and him as the head of that family. Maybe his father before him, it didn't go that way. But you could see how they influence right through all of the generations, right down to today, you know, and it was so sad. So absolutely sad, you know, that there was no mention. Well, they were churchgoing. I did read that, you know, but not in a Christian sense, from what I could read anyway, you know.
Okay, sorry, Sophie?
And the word at the minute too, it strikes me that with this pandemic, people in the world have been putting their hope and their, their faith in, in stuff and what they're doing and what they're acquiring. And then all of a sudden, that's taken away. People have lost jobs, people have lost family members. It's taken away from them and they've nothing. And that, when you can see it on the news, there is this big push, people are concerned about the mental health of the young people, the mental health, not just with the young people, but the mental health of many people across the nations. Because they've come to that point where they have no hope, where they have nothing to work for. And that, I think, at this time in the world is where Christians come in. Because I think that's where we have to move in and offer God, who is really the only place where they will find their hope, where they will find purpose, where they will find contentment. So I think that's a challenge for us at this time.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there's no doubt that some of the things that we look for for fulfillment and contentment are very socially acceptable, you know, earning a good living to look after our children, to make sure they're well educated. We want to provide a good home for them, good food and all the rest of it. But that in its, in itself is a sort of consumerism, you know, accumulating stuff. And then, of course, there's the less socially acceptable, where people take refuge, as, as Ruth said, and drugs, alcohol, all sorts of other things, hooliganism, I suppose, is a, an example or a night working of discontent. Okay, so just a little thought, it says getting personal, we're on page nine now. Think about it, which of these things are you depending on for a happy and fulfilled life? Or is there something else that you look to? Most of these things, relationships, family, work, leisure, achievements, experiences can be good and enjoyable. But what is the teacher's warning to us in all of this? Okay, so if we go on, can someone read Ecclesiastes two? George, would you read it maybe Ecclesiastes two, just two verses twenty-four and twenty-five?
Okay, a person can do nothing better than eat and drink and find satisfaction in their own toil. This too, I see, is from the hand of God, for without him, who can eat or find enjoyment? To the person who pleases him, God gives wisdom, knowledge and happiness. But to the sinner, he gives the task of gathering and storing up wealth to hand over to the one who pleases God. This too is meaningless at chasing after the wind.
Okay, so the question is, well, the teacher realizes that not everyone feels the same way as he does. Some people are quite content, perhaps because they keep busy and don't think too much about the meaning of life. Just we'll see through it. Talking about negativity, it just reminds me of a friend I knew at university. And he was always saying, life's a B I T C H and then you die. I met him twenty years later and I said, well, so and so, has your outlook in life changed? And he said, well, I suppose it has. Life's a B I T C H, then you marry one and then you die. Yeah, I had strong words with him, but but, you know, what is the teacher trying to tell us here? Some people are naturally content, but what, what does he want us to understand from all this? Do you think those two verses that we read?
Well, I suppose everything in the world in moderation and is good and depending on the way we use it, it can be really good, but there's, there's much more. You know, we, we've got to make sure we're not consumed by it or completely preoccupied by it. Because all the wealth and all the wisdom and everything else on its own really achieves nothing. We should look for something more. We have to look to God, I suppose, really.
Yes, that's, that's the key point. God was mentioned briefly in one verse thirteen. What a heavy burden God has placed on man. But here he's saying, look, if you have all this good things, who's responsible for that? This too, I see, is from the hand of God. All the good things that we enjoy, God provides them all, including contentment. And it's important.
That reminds us of an old chorus we used to learn, count your blessings, name them one by one. Then you will see what the Lord has done. And I, I think that's always something, you know, that stays with me every day when I wake and especially during these days, my goodness, I never felt so blessed. That a roof over my head and not struggling and, you know, I think I'd said earlier in maybe the last Bible studies, I nearly felt ashamed that I didn't know anybody in my circle who was struggling very, very hard. I've just felt so thankful that my, I'm talking now my own close family, that they weren't struggling and they weren't. You know, so I count my blessings every day.
That's, that's important. And I think.
I think that's what that verse is saying too, you know, if you're, you know where your blessings are come from and be thankful.
That's right. Okay, can someone then read chapter nine, verses one to twelve? Sophie, would you maybe read, you haven't read yet?
So I reflected on all this and concluded that the righteous and the wise and what they do are in God's hands. But no one knows whether love or hate awaits them. All share a common destiny. The righteous and the wicked, the good and the bad, the clean and the unclean, those who offer sacrifices and those who do not. As it is with the good, so with the sinful. As it is with the one who takes oaths, so with those who are afraid to take them. This is the evil in everything that happens under the sun. The same destiny overtakes all. The hearts of people moreover are full of evil. And there is madness in their hearts while they live. And afterwards, they join the dead. Anyone who is among the living has hope. Even a live dog is better off than a dead lion. For the living know that they will die, but the dead know nothing. They have no further reward, even their name is forgotten. Their love, their hate and their jealousy have long since vanished. Never again will they have a part in anything that happens under the sun. Go eat your food with gladness and drink your wine with a joyful heart, for God has already approved what you do. Always be clothed in white and always anoint your head with oil. Enjoy life with your wife whom you love, all the days of this meaningless life that God has given you under the sun. All your meaningless days, for this is your rotten life and in your toilsome labour under the sun. Whatever your hand finds to do, do it with all your might. For in the realm of the dead where you are going, there is neither working nor planning nor knowledge nor wisdom. I've seen something else under the sun. The race is not to the swift or the battle to the strong. Nor does food come to the wise or wealth to the brilliant or favour to the learned. But time and chance happen to them all. Moreover, no one knows when their hour will come.
Okay, question six in these verses, the teacher mentions the one great problem for us that makes everything under the sun meaningless. What is that problem? One word? Death, okay. It's a common destiny regardless of how we have lived. It's the greatest problem we are up against in trying to find meaning because it destroys everything. We don't have control over when we'll die. That's in the verses eleven to twelve. And the, the writer says it's better to be alive than dead. This is obviously a very negative. It's coming from the world's viewpoint. And, and we need to keep that at the back of our mind. Question seven, in view of this, what is the best we can hope for in this life? What is the teacher more or less saying? If God gives us things to enjoy, we should.
Enjoy.
Enjoy them while they're here. Don't expect or hope for any particular meaning out of life. Enjoy life, all of your meaningless days. That's what it says in nine verse nine. Again, very negative. So if we turn over to page ten, read these verses from Ecclesiastes, it says, I devoted myself to study and to explore by wisdom all that is done under heaven. What a heavy burden God has led on me. And I have seen this burden God has led on men. He has made everything beautiful in its time. He has also set eternity in the hearts of men. Yet they cannot fathom what God has done from beginning to end. So question eight is, what is God's part in the discontent and despair that the teacher discovers as he investigates life? What is God's part?
I suppose it's only through our mistakes and sometimes through the hardships we go through that we learn, you know, and we can go forward from there. Because if we just live our life on blissfully without harm and everything else, if anything really, really bad happened to us, we'd be, we wouldn't be able to cope with it. But I believe that certainly in my life, as various things happened and problems arose, as God gave me the grace and the strength to get over that, I had a little bit more confidence to face what lay ahead.
I think too, in, in that, those last couple of verses, chapter three, verses ten, eleven, that God has set eternity in the human heart. So the human heart is not going to be satisfied with just with what is in the world, what is under the sun, if you like. And I think that's what God's doing. God is encouraging us to seek more, more than what's than just what ends in death, what's just in this world. God wants us to seek that eternity. And I think that's God's part in it to give us that.
Go on, just because you've studied this maybe a wee bit more. In terms of those verses where it talks about the burden that God has placed on the human race or the burden that God has placed in mankind, what do you think that means? I, I, I don't know myself, I don't.
Well, I, I think if we, you know, this is partially answered in the next que, the next question, you know, why do you think God has done this? If we think back to creation, everything was perfect. Adam and Eve were in perfect relationship with God. They were in perfect harmony with nature. They were in perfect harmony with the animal kingdom, the world at large, if you like. And it's really the fall that has produced this discontent. You know, when you look at the outcomes of the fall, man's relationship with God was broken.
Yes, but has, but, but has the burden not been placed on by ourselves as opposed to God placing it?
Well, didn't God say from this day forth, you're cursed?
You're cursed, yeah.
Um, you know, and, and that sense, there is this burden, God has placed this burden on us. If, if we will accept it to, to, to seek God out. I can't remember who it was, one of the ancients said, you know, we all have this God-shaped toll.
Toll, yeah.
And was that, I can't remember who that was, but because of that, we're continually striving. And we try and fill that hole with other things, like job satisfaction and all the rest of it. In that sense, you know, God has created us to be with him. Man's chief end is to glorify God and enjoy him forever. And we lost that.
Yeah.
That's in a sense, the way, you're right, you know, we feel that burden through discontent, no matter how much we strive. We still have that inner, that feeling of loss, that, you know, that lack, I think that's.
What, what? Blaise Pascal.
Was it Wright Pascal?
Yeah, that's only because I've got the internet in front of me.
I thought it was somebody much older, but you know.
Oh, he said, there's a God-shaped vacuum in the heart of each man, which cannot be satisfied by any creative thing, but only by God, the Creator made known through Jesus Christ.
There you go.
If God hadn't put that burden on us, that we might have been content just to be in the world. And we wouldn't have tried to, to find a way back to God, because that, I suppose, is God's, it's his aim that we should have. And he has helped us in that, but we need to desire to restore.
I mean, many, many people believe that it's not we that seek God, it's God that really seeks us. You know, and that left to our own devices, we would probably go on our merry and ignorant way for, forever. But God is always seeking to, to, to bring us back to him. And he's, he's knocking, behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man hear my voice and open the door, I will come into him. You know, it's our prerogative, our, we, we, we have, we have to do it. But he, 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 he keeps knocking, thank God. In my case, anyway, he was knocking for a long time.
Yeah, it's those verses in chapter nine from seven, where he says, go and eat your food with gladness. And for God has already approved what you do. It, it reminds me just so much of people who are considered good, good folk, who live good, upright, honest lives, but don't believe in God. And I, I still think so much about Francis was, her heart was breaking really over her relative who had died and they had that humanist funeral. It's, it's, there's no, you know, there's nothing more. That person has, they have closed their mind to the eternity that God has put in their heart. They've closed that bit of their heart off. And because of that, they're lost. Death is the end for them. And, and I do think that's, that's so sad.
Say somewhere in the Bible that, you know, those that shun God and walk away from and God strives with them, but he will not strive forever. He will leave them, you know, if they refuse completely, he'll leave them to their own devices and, and it's their downfall, really.
But George, what about the prayers that we would have for those people? Sometimes that, I struggle with that, you know, we are praying for people that we love, that are lost, that have known about God, but have decided to go a different path. And we, we are praying for those people. What happens to our prayers? Surely.
You mean when they're dead? While they're still alive?
While they're still alive.
Yes.
Yeah.
All I can tell you is that a lady prayed for her husband, that she would come to the Lord. She prayed for twenty years and he finally did.
Yes, yes.
You know, I think we have to be persistent. We have to exhibit the hope that we have in the Lord, you know, we have to be good ambassadors, if you like, and show why living a Christ-like life is joyful, full of joy, even in all this seeming madness. There is that joy of knowing the Lord Jesus Christ is your savior. It's, it's not pessimism. And we keep praying and God honours those prayers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and. Yeah, and, and, and we can't, we can't give up. We're, we're, we're not praying in our power, we're praying in what God can do. And so when James says, it was the, the prayer of a righteous person is powerful and effective. Then, 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 you know, we pray that with the hope that comes through that. But ultimately, that what happens, and I have to learn this more and more as I kind of put. More and more effort into, you know, saying, saying, God, why, why, why is this person not? Why is this person not coming to you and whatever? And I'm, I've learned over the past month or so that, you know, it's not in Johnny's effort. It's not in, it's not in Ruth's effort.
Yes.
It's, it's the Holy Spirit's working in that person. But, but, but God hears our heart for what, what we desire for another brother or sister.
I just, we talked about prayer last night. And, and, you know, our family who are not saved. And I think one of the key things that we should pray for, not just waltley, Lord save them. But it's, you know, give us opportunities to know when to speak, when to be quiet, when to listen, not to Hector and Badger. You know, and pray for the spirit to help us to listen for those opportunities and take them. Sorry, George, I cut across you there.
Okay, sorry, I usually pray when I'm praying for, well, my daughter and my granddaughter especially. Because my daughter knew the Lord and turned away from him. But I pray, Lord, that other, he would send godly people into their lives to witness to them. And to minister to them. And to, if I can't, sometimes the hardest thing in the world to do is to actually. Talk to your own kith and kin and to encourage them to turn to the Lord. But I'm only one voice. God has many, many people out there, godly people, so I pray that he would bring them alongside them.
That's right, that's right. Johnny, how are we set for time?
We're fine, I'm happy to continue.
So everybody else, it may be another ten minutes or so.
Okay.
Sorry?
Make it ten minutes only.
Well, it could be Ruth George can say, shut up.
George has got such an occupied agenda, so.
I'm teasing you, George, sorry. Okay, the next passage that is not obviously in Ecclesiastes, it's Romans. One verses eighteen to twenty-five. And it says, this passage makes explicit what is implied in Ecclesiastes. Discontent is a consequence of living in a fallen world. So can someone read Romans one?
I, I'll do that, I can do that. Romans one eighteen.
To twenty-five.
The wrath of God has been revealed from heaven against all the godlessness and wickedness of men who suppress the truth by their wickedness. Since what may be known about God is plain to them, because God has made it plain to them. For since the creation of the world, God's invisible qualities, his eternal power and divine nature. Have been clearly seen, being understood from what has been made, so that men are without excuse. For although they knew God, they neither glorified him as God, nor gave thanks to him. But their thinking became futile and their foolish hearts were darkened. Although they claimed to be wise, they became fools. And exchanged the glory of the immortal God for images made to look like mortal man and birds and animals and reptiles. Therefore God gave them over in the sinful desires of their hearts. To sexual impurity for the degrading of their bodies with one another. They exchanged the truth of God for a lie and worshiped and served created things rather than the Creator, who is forever praised. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. So according to these verses, what do people know about God? That's in verse twenty. This is not Christian people, these are people of the world at large. What do people know about God?
They know he existed anyway, but they chose not to follow him.
Yep. They know about his power and divine nature. And how do they know this?
Well, I suppose somebody's.
And creation and what God has, the earth and the, because he's provided for them in there.
Yes, if you ever have a chance, I know in Ballyclare you have all this light pollution. So it's hard to see the night sky. But if you come out to the country where we live, where it's really quite dark. Just to look at the stars, the constellations, it's just mind boggling. And, you know, God created just, even thinking about creating the earth. But to go beyond that to the universe as a whole, you know, when people look and if they. Don't see a divine creator, I don't know. It amazes me. And the third question is, how should people respond to God? If you look at verse twenty-one, how should the world at large respond to God?
Well, should give them thanks.
Yes.
And should be worshiping them.
Yes.
Not to be thinking of foolish ideas, says here in the Bible. And if they don't, the result of that is the domains become dark and confused.
Yep. We.
They're looking towards sinful things or doing sinful things.
That's, that's right. How should people respond to God? Glorify him, worship him, give thanks to him. And you've answered the next bit, next question, how do they respond to God? That they're godless, they're wicked, they want to, it's rebellion in a sense, they want to live life their own way. They don't want to be told what to do. What was it, they. Fear God and keep his commandments, that's, that's what Ecclesiastes ends up with. And what is the result of all this human rebellion against God?
Well, the, man has really since the beginning of time. Needed and felt they needed to worship something, you know, beyond themselves. So they created these gods and images that they then glorified and bowed down to in the place of God. You know, they, there was that in feeling and knowledge that. There was something else there and something else they needed beyond themselves. Yeah, but they chose the wrong option.
Yeah. And that leads to idolatry, if you like, or choosing other idols rather than. The Lord God Almighty leads to a lack of morality and Paul has spelt that out. So in the last question, which really goes back to what Johnny was asking. How can this passage help us understand why God has led on humans? The burden of dissatisfaction with life under the sun or. Life as we, the world would like to live it.
I, I might be wrong in my answer, but is it because. We, we see therefore through this, that God deeply and desperately loves us so much. That he doesn't want, he doesn't want that catastrophic end to us in our sins. And wants us to see, he wants humanity to see that the opportunity for salvation through Christ and to accept it.
I think, yes, I think that's right. In a sense, God spoiled our experience of life in this world. And made our, our lives be meaningless because we're without God. And we are created in God's image. Okay, to finish off. Can we read Ecclesiastes twelve, verse one, then six to seven, then thirteen to fourteen?
Sorry, what was that again, Ecclesiastes?
Chapter twelve, verse one, then verses six and seven, and lastly thirteen and fourteen. Which is the conclusion of the book.
Okay, I'll do it.
Hang on, hang on. Hang on till I find it. Yeah, oh, I had it marked out, but my page just kept. Sorry, Ecclesiastes.
Twelve. Verse one.
Verse one, then six and seven.
Six and seven, then thirteen and fourteen.
Okay. Remember your Creator in the days of your youth, before the days of trouble come. And the years approached, when you will say, I find no pleasure in them. Verse six and seven.
Yep.
Remember him before the silver cord is severed and the golden bowl is broken. Before the pitcher is shattered at the well and the wheel broken at the well. And the dust returns to the ground it came from and the spirit returns to God who gave it. And the last one, thirteen and fourteen.
Yep.
Now all has been heard, here is the conclusion of the matter. Fear God and keep his commandments, for this is the duty of all mankind. For God will bring every deed into judgment, including every hidden thing, whether it is good or evil.
So, sum it up, what, what's the teacher's final conclusion after all this writing and after all this debating and thinking? Could you sum it up in a sentence?
Yeah, go on, somebody else have a go this time.
I would say that, that, that life, I think life without God. Produces a kind of sad end. And really what he's saying is, your life needs to be centered in God who will bring fulfillment.
That's it.
Yeah.
Because we're all, you're lost, if you, you know, we're lost if you don't have God in your heart.
Yeah. Bring, bring God into the picture.
Yeah, but what you were like before you became saved, you know, that feeling. Of nothingness that we're talking about earlier.
Yes, I think when you get the relationship with God right, all the other relationships fall into place. You have that sense of meaning and that sense of content and fulfillment, even.
No matter what happens in life, yeah.
Barry, we were talking about, the writings seem very pessimistic. And John was saying about some of the older writings that were even saying, you know, the best thing you can do is suicide. And, you know, it's so hard when you see the number of suicides in our time in young people. And to know that those who have suicide, they have no hope. But when God comes in, there is hope and God brings hope. And even for people like that, they can be renewed and given new hope. For, for a lovely life and an eternity with God.
That's right. I believe that through this coronavirus, God is really scattering the sheep from the goats. And that he's preparing us for better times ahead. Because people are gathering together now that never did before. And families are becoming closer and closer. And I think although we may see divisions and separations in the church. And challenges, but the true people of God will remain firm. That's my belief anyway.
Yeah.
I think that's right, George.
Absolutely.
If, if you read, when you have time at home, read through chapter twelve. And it's a, a real picture of getting old. It talks about the grinder seething because they are few and I watch your teeth of all the grass. The grasshopper drags himself along, I've got one of those hips now where it drives purple along. Star is no longer stirred.
Your eyes are dimmer.
Your eyes are dimmer. It really is a beautiful picture of aging. And of course, the last question is, when should we, you know. Put into practice all of these things is when we're young and vital and. Mind you, Moses was pretty vital at eighty. And, oh, Caleb, give me, give me the lad up where he would be the toughest to fight off these intruders and he was eighty. So age is just a number.
Yeah, I, I would say it's throughout life because I think some people hold on to this idea. Oh, well, I was confirmed at thirteen and then they think, well, that's, you know, I remembered. I remembered my Creator in the days of my youth. But that, that, that's not gonna, that's not gonna count for anything if the rest of their life's been totally meaningless.
Well, I'm still learning anyway.
Oh, I think so. And just talking about confirmation and it's only a wee quick story. And it just reminds me about the power and the answer to prayer. And so it coincides with what we're talking about earlier. When I was confirmation age, I'd done a runner. I did all the classes. The curate at the time was fabulous, he worked hard with the class. Come confirmation day and I took off, didn't go, couldn't do it, couldn't go through with it. So what would have been about sixteen. And moved my life on in a different direction. Went away, worked away from home, stopped going to church. Anyway. Fast forward thirty years. And I was in work one day and I was a nurse. And a minister came in to talk to one of the patients and I recognized him as the curate. That I had, had put me through the confirmation classes. And by this time I had been confirmed, I got confirmed again when, well, it didn't get confirmed the first time. I got confirmed when I was around thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. And so this minister came in and I said, oh, I'm so happy to see you, how are you? And he said, you're Ruth Taylor. I says, that's right, you're the one that ran away, said, when I forgot about you. So I always think of him now as a Christian. I think back, he must have been distraught when I done a runner. But of course I didn't think about him at the time, I was thinking about me. So I know now that they would have been praying for me or, and he certainly would have been praying for me. But I didn't realize that at the time. So just sort of share that with you. That after all those years and his prayers, it eventually came to fruition.
Okay, so what does the teacher's investigation showed us about our search for contentment? It's not gonna happen without God under the sun. And we can't find contentment in this world. We have to look beyond it to God, can't find it in our world. It's spoilt by the fall and we all face death that's ever before us. When we're discontented, we tend to focus on the irritants that cause the discontent, relationships, work, even church. Changing the irritant, improving matters may not help in contentment. In this life, many good things will be blighted because God doesn't want us to be satisfied with this world. He wants us to long for something better, richer and everlasting. Discontent in a way should be like a goal for us to press into our greater, our Creator and be helped. So in the coming week, if you have an opportunity, try to look at week two on the handout, which is about faith. That's an antidote to discontent. And there are five readings and five questions and five suggestions. So if you have an opportunity, take a look at it and we'll go through that quickly next week. And the next section is about the food that satisfies. And it's, I'm sure you all know the passage in John six, the feeding of the five thousand. So that's next week. Okay, any questions or thoughts just to finish off?
I, I realize this is going to be a real distraction, but I couldn't avoid it with. The, the chapter for next time. And that is that, this is such a bad link. And on Saturday night at five thirty, if you're interested, we're doing a thing called Family Feasts. Where I'm, I'm gonna do a cookery demonstration. If you're really interested and I've just put up the, the Zoom code and passcode for it. Whenever, whenever I saw the chapter saying, the only food that satisfies, I thought to myself. I must remind people of the family feast. Sorry, George, that was such a bad distraction.
I was just thinking, if I did that, it would be thirty seconds, it would be press the microwave down. It wouldn't last very long.
Anyway, sorry about that.
Johnny, would you close it in prayer, please?
I will do, let, let's just take a moment and then let's pray. Just in that space of contentment. It's my desire that today, into this day, that each of us will have that space. Maybe it's just looking at a flower outside that's starting to come into bloom, maybe a, a little snowdrop or something. And just to gaze at the beauty of God's creation. And to be so content in, in knowing that he is Lord of all. So Father God, we, we thank you for our time together. And Lord, thank you that, like the prodigal. And you, you, you chased after us as you saw us coming. After we messed up in our lives and you ran and greeted us with love. Thank you what you've done for each one of us. Thank you that we have the opportunity to, to rejoice in that. That our life is not meaningless because you are in the center of it. Forgive us, Lord, whenever we've allowed the things of this world, the meaningless things of this world. And to take over our time. And, and help us each and every day, Lord, to find ways of finding you in, 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 in and through the, the everyday life. Finally, Father, we just pray for those that we know. Maybe in our families, our friendships, who are walking a life that doesn't have a purpose. And Lord, into this day, we pray that we would have opportunities by your spirit to speak hope and truth. And the life that you give to them. Bless us into the rest of this day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.